The call to order, the Upson County Planning Commission meeting, a regular meeting for Monday, March the 11th, 2024. Can we get roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Pitts.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Chair McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Here.
Commissioner Fallon?
Here.
We have Coram, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item two, adoption of the meeting minutes from the February meeting. We do not have those. We will roll those to a future meeting. We have the sign-in sheets. So, I'll ask for a motion. I'd like to move item four up. That has no others here to speak for it, if we could. I really want them to have to sit through all the other speakers. Do I have a motion to do that?
I'm making a motion.
Does second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, we will start with a special exception, SPX 2024-03, Sammy and Bissel, 2347 Roland Road, parcel number 025045, for AR Family Cemetery. Do we have anybody here for that? There's no one signed up for that. No one? Okay. All right. So, I guess, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm making a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Currier, can we get your presentation?
Yes, ma'am. This is a summary of your staff report. I'm just gonna hit the highlights. I'm not hitting all the details in the staff report. The owner applicant in this case is Sammy and Bissel, requesting a family cemetery about 400 square feet on her property of 12 acres of 2347 Roland Road. Cemetery is a permitted use in the AR. I will check the records, and this is the sixth one of these we've done since I've been here. So, this is not an uncommon request, but it's not all-the-time request. This is on the northeast side of Roland Road, south of Woodland Road. The land uses in the area are heavy woods and some single-family, low-density single-family, all the zoning in the area as they are. As with all special exceptions, you've got the review criteria from the ordinance, which are required to have by state law, as well as your own ordinance. And these are those, you'll see an evaluation that I've done inside each one of these criteria, and basically you'll see that there's little to no impact. Again, this is not uncommon for these sort of requests. There's not gonna be a heavy impact. This is a relatively small 20 by 20, 400 square feet. That's being requested, and it's, again, not uncommon. The staff does recommend approval with conditions. These are the five conditions recommended. These are very similar to the conditions imposed on the family cemeteries in the past. Sometimes the area, the space, is a little bigger. Sometimes it's a little smaller. But this is generally speaking those exact conditions. We do request, as embodied in number five, that they do record this location of the cemetery in the official records of the county or the county clerk, so that there is a land-use record of this cemetery existing there. Of course, the Planning Commission has the right to recommend approval, denial, or approval with conditions to the Board of Commissioners. Final approval is with the Board of Commissioners. All right, so this is the aerial of the large parcel. You can see the home and some accessory structures there, and then where the location of the family cemetery plot would be. This is just a close-up to give you a closer idea where it is relative to the road. It's approximately 48 feet off the road. We asked it to be 50 feet. I think there's enough room. There is a tree there, as you can see. Hopefully, they can move it a little bit and get us to that 50-foot setback from the road. You can see the yellow tape. You do have the construction material in the way, but just before, after that, you'll see the red, the yellow tape, and that's where they had basically said the burial, the cemetery, would be. This is a gate that comes from the right-of-way, and you can see that are close up, and here's the general location where their family cemetery would be. This is looking from the cemetery to the house, so you can see it is relatively close to the house. I just basically turned around from the yellow tape area, and this is what you see. And then from the road, from the north side, when you look from the road, I'm looking in the direction, you know, my truck is more visible than that location would be, at least coming from this side of Roland Road. And that concludes the staff report, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions or discussion?
I don't have any.
I don't guess there's any kind of found this exception plan to show what this property's intention is for the duration? Is this gonna stay in the family, or is it, you know, my feeling is it may affect the value of the property, or somebody might not want it later on down the road, unless we knew this is gonna stay in the family for a long?
Do you have any?
Is Ms. Bissel here?
Here I am.
Oh.
It's gonna be lifelong. It goes on to my children, and my youngest is 14. He's not going nowhere. My other children, they own property in Barnesville. They've been here 33 years. So, it's family owned by about four of us. Any other things?
Anything else? Okay. Do I have a motion, conditions on this?
I'm making a motion to approve this with the staff recommendations.
Okay. Numbers one through five?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with the conditions of one through five on the staff report. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, one. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, Ms. Bissel, you know this goes to the county commissioners for them to approve at their meeting next month. I don't know. I don't have that exact date, but hang on here. I think he's getting it.
Board of Commissioners.
April 9th?
Yeah, April 9th will be the meeting. And we'll get you the same, you did receive the agenda, I hope, in an email?
Yes.
All right. We'll do the same thing as we're getting their agenda when that comes up, but it should be the 9th of 8th.
Okay. Going back to item three, old business, the application for special exception, SPC 2024-02, Jessica Butler, Timothy Pryor, represented by Steve Reeves, 1922 Lawrence Road, parcel number 005011 and 005112. AR recreation use, RV Park and Gateway Quarter overlay. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Making a motion to open the hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. What I'm going to do is, several people signed this, but not everybody marked it as you wanted to speak. So, I'll just start at the top, and if you want to speak, then we'll have you come up to one of these marks. Stanley Elliott, if you'll state your name and address for us?
I'm Stanley Elliott, 5131 Crest Highway. And my family also owns property, so near the church, just before you get to Mark Road, where this plot of land's gonna be. My biggest concern, back years ago, when I was younger, I had property in this county. Well, everybody decided they were gonna decorate their safety tanks. So, the next thing you know, I got all their safety tanks lined and coming to my property, and my wells failed. All right. At the time, I really didn't have the money to do what I did, but I, it just so happened, for a long amount of time, we had to take the people out of our property, move them, and then I had to put city water to our houses. Then I had to fill up my wells because everybody else with their safety tank lines. This setup with these campers, there's gonna be a great deal of safety. All right, either you're gonna have to have a place to dump, or you're gonna have to have some setup to dump. I don't care what you do. Then what's gonna happen is water. All right, what if there's a decision to go up there and put a 100-inch well in? Or if they go down, and Upson County is full of what they call crystalline or porcelain grates. You can pour water, you can pour a dye in a well, and later on, see that dye show up in another well. That way, you're gonna put a mental salt well over here in the corner of Upson, Lamar, and Pike, but when they tested the water flow, they couldn't do it. That mental well, what they did went down so deep in the ground, and they stored chemicals that lasted like 50 or 60 years. They stopped that. Then as for zoning, all right, you've got to have two acres of land in this county to put a dwelling on. All right, if you're gonna put 60 spots up there, the traffic is awful. When I was a volunteer fireman, we worked like the devil to keep the traffic where we've had wrecks, all kind of accidents, and everything else. Plus, when you bring more people in here for tourism, and you put them in the Flint River, I can tell you from experience, they don't drink. So, what are they gonna do when they drink? They're gonna fall out of their canoes and their boats and everything, and the volunteer fire department, Upson Civil Defense is gonna have to go after. Law enforcement, all right. You've got somebody that comes outside the county, they get up there drinking and fighting, where the Sheriff's Office is gonna go. We're already limited in the amount of people we have in the Sheriff's Office. Noise, why do the people up there want to noise? We've already got enough noise on 74 with the jake brakes and the tractor trucks. We've got to have them to have fuel and food and other services. And then we've already got a bad spot, what used to be the old Upson County landfill, up on Fatire Road. We've got it in the super fund to get it cleaned up. So, then you've got people, you're gonna have to have electric lines, and they're gonna do it the cheap way. They're gonna run it under the ground. And my biggest thing is, there's not that much tourism, and there's not that many people unless they're basically here in this county that won't float the flint. And the ones that did float the flint in the past, when I was a volunteer, assistant chief, and a rescue person, we had to get them. And if they do let something come in like that, I think they need to put something in the cotton picking ordinances, where if you get in that river, Upson County has to spend the money to go get you, you pay for it. And they're not gonna do that. So, that's my biggest part. Plus, I got land right down the road. Most of these people in here got a church right down the road from it. And do you think that anybody's gonna care about what that church is trying to sing, or have a sermon or something with the noise? And then the people across the road, you know, all the time of the night and day, I don't care what you say. If you get a crowd of people, you get a group of people that come in, they're gonna make noise. Lawrence Road, it's not the best road in the world, and the bridge right down on Lawrence Road at Tancati, I mean, you come start hauling big stuff in there, like big campers and all, it's not gonna stay there. But that's my biggest thing about the sewage and all, and the noise and everything. And this county has got a good water system out in the west side of our county. It's forward aquifer. Our aquifer comes from Lookout Mountain, Tennessee. The next aquifer is down at Beano Vista Door. So, you know, everybody needs to think about where you get your water from, where your sewage is going. And like I said, until you deal with sewage and a well, you don't know what's going on. I think it'll be y'all's time.
Thank you. I'm gonna stop here and just ask, there's no one on this list Timothy Pryor, Jessica Butler, or Steve Reeves signed on this list?
I signed away. I just gotta check for the favor.
Adam Parram?
Tim Pryor?
No.
259, are you looking under my wrist?
Yeah, I'm looking, I was looking for Steve, Steve Reeves.
Steve's not in here, I don't think.
Yeah. I'm just making sure none of them are in here that are part of this.
Well, he's one of the owners.
Where?
One that just spoke to you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But I'm just trying to make sure that, so, did you have, I'm looking at this, because it says Steve Reeves was gonna be represented by Steve. Did you have a presentation to give?
I would like to most definitely address everyone's questions or concerns, so if I could go last after these people are speaking?
That's fine. That's fine. Okay. I just was making sure I didn't see Steve's name on here. Okay. All right. So, next on the list is Pastor Derek Shelton?
Yes, if I'm correct.
Sure.
To the Upson County Planning Commission, to you, Madam Chair. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Springfield Mission Baptist Church, which is located right on Crest Highway. We have experienced in the past a lot of vandalism to the church with the limited resources as pertains to police and so forth and so on. That is our concern. We're trying to do some positive things in the community, and we want to make sure that the community remains safe. We understand with RV Park, there's nothing really invested. People come, they park, and they leave. They stay temporary. But we have been in this community 133 years coming, this coming April, the 4th Sunday. So, we want to do all that we can to protect our church, protect our surroundings, make sure that it continues to be a positive place for people to come and have a great worship experience. With their changing lives, with building lives, we want to leave this church to our children. As the young lady mentioned earlier about, you know, passing on, you know, the cemetery, the land, so forth, that's the same thing we want to do with our church. Again, none of us 133 years old, so there have been some that have left that church for us. We want to make sure the church stays in a good condition, make sure the church is a welcoming home. Again, we don't know who will be with those RV parks who will come and park, you know, again, we're concerned about, we have been vandalized a couple of times. So, for us, we want to make sure that the church stays safe, and to make sure that we're, again, surrounded by positive influences, have a positive environment. We have done things such as the Grace Cancer Walk. We are scheduling to do some other things in the community. We want to continue to build on our church, you know, I mean, on down the line. We want to build a multiplex, multiplex recreation center where kids can come and enjoy, so we don't need to have the other negative influence that will cause any kind of potential threat to that. So, it is our position, again, as we keep the area where it is, to protect our church, to protect the future of the church, and to be able to leave something positive for our church. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Glenn Collins. You just said your name and address, please.
I'm Glenn Collins. I live 107 Carroll Lane, Thomas, Georgia. First gentleman spoke about a lot of my concerns, but I rode up to the one that they have in Yatesville today, and I drove through it. And a lot of those campers out there are large, some of them are small, some are medium-sized, but they're on very small lots. Some of them have actually built decks onto the front and the back of their campers, RVs, or whatever you wanna call them. And some of them even have handicap ramps. They have, I guess, paved parts where they grill out. They have fire pits. And when I, I consider stuff like decks and all that improvement, when I have an improvement to my property, my taxes go up. These people out here, they come in from all parts of the world, I guess. I don't know where all they come from. But anyway, they pay $600 a month rent, is what I understand. They pay no property tax. They just about drained the Yatesville water system, and Yatesville is having to go way up on their water rates now, for all the citizens that lived there all them years because of it. Therefore, it makes you wonder about the fire taxes. Would they have enough water in their system to put out fires where they need to? The other thing about services, we talk about, talk about sewage. I don't know if they're gonna have a safety tank, they're gonna have a truck come in and pump each camper, or whatever they don't do. But they gotta have electrical services. And some of these mobile homes out there, or I'm just kidding, sorry, RVs out there, have propane tanks, huge yard propane tanks, sitting next to their RVs and all. I don't know if it's code or not, but it seems too close to me, from what I've been told over the past year, that it's got to be certain distance from the structure before you can have all those large propane tanks. Now, you know, this is a 61-acre tract, I think they said, out there. I'm not sure how many parcels they gonna have, pads they gonna have, or whatever. But each parcel should be charged a property tax on it, rather than one big tax for the whole property. If you've got one whole tax for one whole property, they're gonna pay $600 a month rent. That man is gonna pay that. But yet, every one of these people, there's hundreds of them out here, you hate them right now, every one of these people are gonna draw on the services of Upson County. They're gonna draw on the fire taxes, and they're gonna draw on the sheriff's protection, they're gonna draw on the maintenance of the road. Every one of them has, but none of them are gonna pay into the taxes. They're just gonna pay the owner of the property a monthly rent. Now, look at my notes here. As folks sort of all go, suppose, I guess these people are from Upson County, but suppose they get a good business going, and two years down the road, sell out to somebody from out of state. Who's gonna be responsible for all this? Who's gonna have day-to-day operations of it? Just something to consider. This one here is personally not near my home, but I have big parcels of property near my home that people could do this on. And therefore, I'm just asking the commission, planning's on, whoever you need to meet with, before you approve this, please get it right, so you'll have a right for future people that want to come in and do this. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I mean, yeah. Glenn, the place you spoke of in Yatesville, was that on the side, the other side, maybe?
On the lake, out there.
On the lake, okay.
The city, yes.
That's a city.
Yeah, it is a city.
County property.
Right, but it's a draw on that wall.
Absolutely.
And if they put it in mind of your neighborhood, in your neighborhood, it'd be a draw on the county system.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Next is Heather Rush.
Thank you, board. I'm gonna trash these out.
Sure.
Just my little pocket points, a lot of it is from information that was addressed in the last meeting.
And if you would, just say your name and address, please.
Sure. Heather Rush, 258 Hendricks Church Road. So, I just want to, again, talk about the AR zoning. In Section 501, AR zoning districts are intended to establish and preserve quiet areas where the primary activities are those of farming, agriculture, livestock, timber cultivation, and related uses consistent with maintaining the land resources of Upson County. Residences of low-density nature, which are incidental to these activities, are also permitted. These districts are free from other uses, which are incompatible with low-density agricultural residential neighborhoods. An emphasis on that statement, a 70-site RV park on 60, 61 acres is a high-density use. That is not low-density. So, I know we're talking about a special exception, but it is not consistent with low-density use out there. Additionally, in our previous meeting, Mr. Currier mentioned Tancati as an M1 exception. However, Tancati was built in 1991 and was grandfathered into these new codes, so we contend that that has no bearing on this discussion. Questions we have is, is the park to be held by the developer, or are there plans to sell that in the future? Remembering that, by precedent, special exemptions are issued to the owner alone, and they're not transferable with the property when it's sold. Number two on here, somebody else is gonna talk about that, so I'm gonna skip over that. Again, I will address the, Upson County, per the assessor's office, since 2018, the western portion of the county, home values have increased 70%, which is 20% more than average homes in the rest of the county. Homeowners in the area would have a negative impact on their home values, with homes closer to the proposed park suffering a higher decrease in value. This decrease in value would result in overall loss of revenue to the county tax digest, and a loss of equity for homeowners in proximity to the park. And then finally, the developer had cited an increase to tourism in Upson County, and that's based on what study? Exactly who and what is going to benefit in Upson County for increased tourism? And if you, if the park is approved, it will impact the campers that come to Spurbluff. They'll lose business, also resulting in a loss of revenue directly to the county. So, just things to consider in that. Spurbluff is, I think it's three months out of the year, is pretty much booked as far as their campsites, but the rest of the year, they are not at full capacity. So, it would impact Spurbluff, and therefore, revenue to the county. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Next on the list is Steve Rush.
May I approach and pass something out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce myself first. My name is Steve Rush.
My name is Steve Rush. I live at 2158 Hendricks Church Road, at the end of Lawrence, where it intersects Hendricks Church. I also have served Upton County. I was on the IDA Board for six years, I was also the chairman of the IDA Board. And I'm trying to look at this through the lens of a developer contractor, because I am also that. The first thing I would like to do is say nothing in this that I'm going to say is a poke at the county or the county roads department. I just want to present the condition of the road. It's not intended in any way to be negative to the county, because the county has done a great job over the past few years in improving our infrastructure. I also want to acknowledge that the ordinances of Upton County also do allow for RV parks. We understand that. And also, I would like to point out that there would be a great cost to the taxpayer that needs to be considered if this park is allowed to go forward. The first thing I'd like to talk about is existing conditions of Lawrence Road. I've attached some pictures to the, to the, handout I gave you. Just just a few pictures, I have dozens and dozens of pictures of these examples. I just included 12 examples of the condition of the road. There are several things, as mentioned previously, the bridge capacity is 11,500 pounds. Will most RVs and most trucks approach or exceed that, do you say? It's been mentioned before, the bridge was due for an inspection. We don't know if that bridge has been inspected and is up to date, or the condition of that bridge, as far as it pertains to structural integrity. The paving degradation on Lawrence Road is pretty bad. So it's a rural road, it's a road that has developed over years and been paved and widened out. I mean, all roads were counted for those at once. But you look at the paving on Lawrence Road, the thickness of the paving is a half an inch in some places. There's some pictures in there. The paving is degrading rapidly. That's due to subgrading, other issues, water, different things that happen to subgrades. Also, the width of Lawrence Road is 19 feet, from white line to white line. There's also a picture of that in what I handed out to you. RVs are eight and a half to 10 feet wide. Theoretically, two RVs could not pass on that road if they were coming at each other. It would be a problem. There is no shoulder predominantly along Lawrence Road. If someone had to pull off the road, they cannot, in probably 85% of the road. Vehicle routing. So it was mentioned at the last meeting that trucks come in and out of Tinket, or Tencotti, however it's said. And that is correct. However, those trucks are professional truck drivers. Those trucks know and understand bridge limits and weights. They understand, I have a YSA CDL, so you go to school to learn what roads you can be on, what you can't, what research you need to do to be on those roads. Those truck drivers know that. They come in from 74, they go into Tencotti, and they come out and they go the other way. They don't come down Lawrence Road this way, and they don't cross that bridge, because they are aware that the bridge will not hold that capacity. Let's talk about development issues. And again, I try to look at this through the eyes of a developer, if it was me building it. These are some things that I would have concerns about. It was mentioned in the last meeting that a phased design may be how they approached this, build a little bit, a little bit more, a little bit more over the course of a number of years. That raises great concern to me as to the sanitary sewer system, the storm system, how those things would be phased. They would need to be engineered and designed for phased-type construction. You can't just take an all-inclusive site plan that has been designed to function as a whole, and then just chop it up and phase it, because your storm water won't be controlled properly. You won't have the capacities for your sanitary sewer or your water system. So those things need to be given consideration. Also, if it's phased, will both entrances be completed at one time? Because it was mentioned that it would be an entrance on 74, or one on Lawrence, and one on Lawrence Road? How would this phasing happen and occur? Those are concerns that need to be discussed. Completion of the required amenities. The ordinances require certain amenities to be within the park. I'm assuming those are designed into the plan, I wouldn't think it would be any other way. But with phased construction, how would all those amenities come into play? Would they be done day one, or are they going to try to also be phased? The ordinance speaks to those all being in place at one time. So that needs to be given consideration. So there's another concern. If the project is phased, how do we ensure that the project will be completed as designed to meet the code within the ordinances? I have been involved in the construction of many, many phased projects. Sometimes the subsequent phases don't happen, depend on the economy, depends on what happens. Maybe the park didn't work out so well, and the financial piece isn't, the performa's not working. So how do we ensure that the park gets developed to meet the ordinances and the codes upfront at one time? There are some ways to do that. It would need to be, the county would need to have proof of financing for the entire project as a whole, which would mean the project would have to be costed, and it would have to be financing, require proof of financing that the project is funded. You could take out, the county should require a payment performance bond, so the project will be completed as designed. I think the city of Thomason can share some stories with you about the mill site, not having a payment performance bond on that site. And we see what happened, the developer got in trouble, they pulled out, and you see what we have in town. Waste management. To service 70 RV sites and a dump station is quite the undertaking for a field line system. I've been involved in many large field line system design and construction. That will take up some acreage, and you will not be able to park units or have amenities in those areas. That's a very expensive system to serve that level of waste. That needs to be looked into very closely, because it's very expensive to do it properly, and it has to be designed to a full occupancy load, and installed per that. It was mentioned that there were horse trails. I'm not sure what you would get for questing trails on a 61-acre site. I feel like you could probably ride a 61-acre site on a horse in about 15 minutes. So I'm not sure what that is as an amenity. Or what happens to the horses in overnight stays? Is there a barn facility? Is there a questing facility? What goes on with that? A few operational issues, onsite management. What is that going to look like? Is it going to have a full-time attendant? Is it going to have full-time groundkeepers? What is going to happen to this park over time? That should be given great consideration. There should be a business plan that shows the attendants, the costs, how that fits into the performa, how all these things work financially, because at the end of the day, all of it is a financial endeavor. And anyone developing a park like this would be looking for a return. And if that doesn't present itself and yield itself, then abandonment is what happens. Tenancy. So the ordinance requires there to be limited stays in a 12-month period. That's okay, that should be that one. However, who's going to monitor those directions to stay? Who is the police? The county's not an HOA. The city's not an HOA. Who's going to ensure that those requirements within the ordinance are being met? So those are just things that come to my mind, and it didn't take long to come up with this. But I would ask that, before the board approves anything, that they give all these things consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Stephanie Cannon. Just say your name and address.
My name's Stephanie Cannon, and I live at 1981 Hendricks Church Road. Following up my dad was not what I wanted to do. He talked about it, everything, ever. As everybody before me, they pretty much hit all of the concerns that I had, some additional concerns that I had, be it that I am in the medical field. I come at this more from a public service, public health and safety approach. My biggest concern, as we've already touched on, was emergency services to the area. I live in the area, I have had to call 911 myself, I've had, I've hit deer. We live in a very deer-populous area, and response times have been longer than they needed to be, in which I had to drive myself to the hospital one time, where just the other night, I had a 32-minute response time after my daughter hit a deer. You're talking about needing emergency services for people who are traveling. You don't know their conditions, you don't know what their health is, heart attack, stroke, they happen unannounced all the time. And again, that would be more strain on an already strained emergency management system that we have in our county. Additionally, also from some personal experience, communicable diseases, when you have people who are traveling in and out of our area, they are not from Upton, they are not from around here. We just had a pandemic come through. So we all learned a lot from those things, and that they are not meant to be permanent tenants, and they're not drawing from our current tenants and our current people living here. You increase the chances of communicable diseases. We never know when a pandemic is going to come, you don't know when a rise of a virus is going to come. And we have two places that service kind of out in that area. You're talking about Dollar General, and then Ingalls and Woodbury. So those people would also be affected in those areas if somebody were to bring and say communicable disease. People, when they travel, or they live that RV travel life, they don't, you can't stay in one spot. So even if we had another shutdown, or even a small shutdown, these people are still moving. The tenants of these RV parks still derive an income. You know, do they shut all those places down, and tell everybody to go home and park your RV somewhere? It just doesn't happen. So I think of that as well. Additionally, with traveling, learning in boater school, actually, when you travel, you never know what you're picking up along the way, along your routes of travel. They tell you to drain your boats before you bring them to another body of water or some other region, because you can bring non-indigenous microbes, plants, animals along with you. So if those people are traveling from non-indigenous areas, there's a higher risk that they'll bring something that could be catastrophic to our county, to our ecosystem, our plant life, animal life, the Flint River itself. So those are just some more concerns that I wanted to bring up. But the biggest thing that I wanted to harp on or bring to everybody's attention was more the public safety and the protecting our communities. I lost a husband to COVID two years ago, I know what it's like. Upton has a very small infection rate, and we pride ourselves on it, because we are such a small community. And if we keep opening up our roads to travel, people who have no intention of staying here, they're just bringing, as everybody before me has said, a burden to our taxpayers, a burden to our county, a burden to our emergency services, our roads, our infrastructure, as well as our public health. That's my tip, Ed.
Thank you. All right, Adam Farm. Just say your name and address, please.
My name is Adam Farm. I live at 6864 Crest Highway. Pretty much everything's been said already. I'm not nearly as well spoken as all the people in front of me, but my property is all of us directly across from where this would be. The edge of my property is across the road from the edge of that. And I do camp a lot, I do a lot of research on campgrounds before I camp. I have a small son, my wife comes with me. And one thing I look at is amenities, what's there? And we, when we camp, it places that have lakes, amusement parks, things like that nearby. And if you ever, if you do camp, and you accidentally end up at a campground that doesn't have really nice amenities, you find out there's a certain type of people that generally end up in those places. And they'll end up, you know, maybe paying a little bit more, not accusing anybody of anything, but they might pay a little bit more, try to get their stay extended so they can live there. It's as simple as getting a PO box. Now, you know, you're actually a permanent resident at that campground, but all your milk goes to a PO box. You kind of, people side skirt that all the time. People that are willing to break that law to get there, you know, what are they willing to break on top of that? Generally, things like that are kind of progressive. But, that being said, my small son and my wife, I've got a couple ponds, you know. My wife works for the school system, she's hungry sometimes. When this was approved, and most camping's done, in the spring and summer, and on vacation times, I've got to worry about my wife, you know, walking around on the property by herself. You know, when people, as we said, transient people are out there, over, looking around, you know, they see my wife, they see my son, they see, you know, maybe a couple of toys that I have. They think they want more than I do. And that is something I'd have a hard time living with. And I think it's something that the board should consider living with, if they approve it, if something happens. You know, that's going to be on whoever approves it, that they didn't put in, if it's approved, the proper measures to stop anything bad from happening. I know you can't control people, but that's almost the point. You can't put in enough policy to keep the bad that would come from something like that without really overstepping the bounds of what I think local government should do. There's just a, they don't meet. And that's the gist of what I have to say. I appreciate y'all's time, and I'd like y'all to think about that.
Thank you. All right, so that is everyone I have on my list, except for Mr. Pryor, if you'd like to speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Glad to have a lot of people out here for support. Well, first of all, I guess I'm getting with Stanley, with the wells and septics brought off the rip. There's county, county and state guidelines that provide that, and I most definitely intend to put it into whatever those guidelines are. If the county ever runs water out there, I'm not opposed to attaching to the water and using water there for the county. As far as the rules and regulations for the traffic, the traffic is, there's a lot of traffic on 74. Not so much on Lawrence, except at Tencotti. But we're not really planning on bringing too much more traffic there. We're really more trying to facilitate this stuff that's already there, and people that already use the stuff and don't have a place to stay, like the Boy Scouts camps. There's a lot of people that already go to the Boy Scouts camps and don't have no place to stay. They're staying in the tents or whatnot. Boy Scouts have decided that they didn't want to do an RV park, which actually throws me down to Derek a little bit, from part of the community, which we would like to do a lot of stuff for the community also. I personally, myself, have already done tens of thousands of dollars of free work for the Boy Scouts. We've got, I've owned several properties in Upton County before. I've owned property down at Yellow Gate, and can understand about the 911 response time also. Because if you're down at the Yellow Gate, if everyone knows where the Yellow Gate is, it's closed all the time. If you get hurt down there, I mean, that's, good luck. That's right. As far as with the electric, back with Stanley, with the electric, talking about doing the cheap way. I actually own an electrical contracting service company. That's what I do. We do not cheap anything out. I do not cheap anything out. You come to my house, my house is nice, beautiful. I built most of it myself, my office, the same way. I take pride in all of my work, and most definitely don't want to just do a good job for myself, but for the community and the surrounding houses also, to possibly bring up the house values around. Derek mentioned also that we don't know who will be in the RV park. So we'll most definitely be having IDs for everyone that comes in. We'll have an ID for everyone, so we'll know who's in there 100% of the time. Like I said in the previous meeting, it will only be 14 days maximum. I don't want them there 14 days, just to be clear. I want them weekend, and see you next weekend, maybe. As far as the Yatesville trailer park, that's what that is. That is a trailer park. We're not building a trailer park, we're building an RV park. The trailer park over in Yatesville, you can stay for however long you want. That is a permanent address. This will not be a permanent address. Sorry about this, guys. All right, back to the traffic. Also, the RV park will not be at capacity at 100% all the time. I mean, that's just not going to happen. There'll be events happening at the Boy Scouts park. Obviously, people want to come to the river, both at Spurbluff and off 18. And really, this is not a spot that somebody's going to come here to go to, go places directly. And really, this is not a spot that somebody's going to come here to go to some places directly. It's going to be an overflow. So if someone wants to go to Squirrel Bluff, they're going to go stay at Squirrel Bluff. Now, if that place is filled up or whatever, they'll probably come over there and stay there and then spend the day. However, go down to 36, wait, there's a RV park down at 36 also. I don't know if that's Upson. And as far as, City wanted to get it right as far as, I guess, the codes and everything. I've read pretty much all of the codes and ordinance for Thomaston. I believe this is the first RV park under these new regulations. There's a, and I believe they got it right. I read it through there. I believe they've, they've gotten it right. It looks great. I mean, I don't know if y'all have read the article not for it, but y'all should go check it out. I most definitely put a lot of time and effort into it to make sure there are not other trailer parks in the county. Back to, as far as plans to sell. So as plans to sell, we don't plan to sell. Obviously, you never know what happens. I might be in a car wreck tomorrow, in a wheelchair, something happens, we might have to sell. But the plans to sell, we're not going to do it. This was Jessica's family's land. We plan on keeping it and giving it to our kids. As far as Lawrence Road is bad, Lawrence Road is bad, but you know, we're maybe 300 foot off of 74. So our traffic will not even be coming to the bridge, as been discussed beforehand, which I'll bring up in a second. Our traffic will only be coming towards the bridge. So they'll be turned off. And as far as the Lawrence Road goes, that's, you know, everybody's going to be pretty much coming off 74. Most definitely don't want to turn right on Hendrick Church Road or, and go up Pleasant Valley, because I don't know if they'll make it up it. The bridge capacity, I've rode by there, it does not say anything about a bridge capacity there. I've also rode to the one off of Drippin' Rock Road, which was a hand-built bridge in wood trusses. I do have a picture of that, it has the load capacity and it's more than what Ms. Rush stated, for sure. As far as truck drivers and being professionals, it's too far between. I understand they do have to go through a class and not, you know, I may feel that some people that have RVs should go through a class, get RV, because that's not for me to decide. As far as engineered, so the engineered drawings is something that we plan on doing also. I mean, we do plan on doing the engineered drawings. And that's the purpose I said of the topo last time, it's going to cost me, you know, 20 plus thousand just for the topo and it's going to have the engineer drawings included with it. So we plan on doing that also. Yeah, we most definitely don't want to fly by. As far as phasing goes, we do want to phase it, most definitely. And I do understand your concerns 100%. Because like I said, you never know, like any Florida act, you never know, but that's not our plan. Our plan is to get it completed, finished. Obviously, we do want some revenue coming in, most definitely, but I think it's still going to be a perk for the local activities around the area. Just say Alan Ragsdale with his fishing services, it'd be great for him to have. It'd be great for the church, obviously. Y'all have events out there, they could come by there, stay, stay there. I don't know if y'all have seen the drawings, but I'm sure we're going to pop them up here in a second and you'll see we've pretty much kind of kept everything away from the church of good ways also. Horses, as far as horses, there's no horse trails. There's going to be a turnout pasture and there will be a barn. And this is for people going to horse shows wherever across the nation, just somewhere for them to stop. You know, they can let their horses out, they don't have to keep them trapped up in the trailer. They can let them out in the field and they'll have a couple of stables there, they can keep them in also. Let's see what we got here. Here is the picture of the rating for Drippin' Rock Bridge, which I'm pretty sure the other bridge, the concrete bridge off of Lawrence Road is more than that. And what is that, 26 ton tandem or 13 ton tandem?
13.
Y'all have a copy of the drawings, correct? That's it. Here'll be the hookups, if anyone can pass that around. Everybody been in the RV park, knows what that looks like. Water, this will be our entrance sign, something like that with our name there, it's going to have the Bigfoot on it. The entire property will be fenced, wooden fenced, except for around the pasture, probably be wire fence, wooden in some places. But we want most definitely, we want to do good for the county. We want to most definitely come in and slum it out. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need these back?
No, you can have them on.
Okay. Anybody else who has not signed up that wants to talk? Okay. You can sign up right here for me.
Hello, everyone. My name is Casey Elliott. You've heard about the ad story earlier. I just want to touch upon some of the issues, most everybody kind of mentioned them. But as the gentleman here who wants to put the RV park in has stated, there is no backup plan for water. Pretty much right now, there's, you know, other areas of the county, there's county water that comes out to us. In that area, it's not going to go well. If you don't have the well, you don't have water. So no matter how well you do your system, there's always the if, just like you can always get in a car wreck, there's always an if. What's going to happen to the people as well if there's the if? What's going to happen to the people's property value? This gentleman over here just bought a house out there. I lived there probably three years or so, lived down the road my whole life. I don't know the property value of it. I also already have people's dogs that can wander all over the place. I don't want drunks running all over the place behind my house. And the churches already had issues, they had to put up a gate. I have a gate and everything fenced, but that doesn't mean someone can come around that fence or gate. And then also, the gentleman talked about this. Going over on a farm my whole life, animals get out to get out often. Let's say one of those horses runs out into 74 and gets in a wreck with a vehicle. As you said, did you move the RV park? Other people said that 74 is busy. It is quite busy. I've almost got ran over and tried to drive into my own driveway because there's a passing area right along there and people love to use that passing area. You know, I had my blinker light on, someone almost took me out. Thanks for being here tonight. But also, someone mentioned the Dollar General, it doesn't stay very full as it is now or the shutters don't stay as full. You got that coming in there, you got the traffic, like I said, the septic tank, they're drawing off the aquifer that other people use for the well, there's less things, they're draining the electrical grid also that's going out there. I said, people walk in across your property, you know, we have people walking down the road now, people's animals that get out and come across your property, if you have animals that like others' animals. There's cows across the road, are kind of catty corner for me as well. People have, you know, farm animals out there. There are quite a bit of concerns more than I think actual value to the community. And Alan Ragsdale won't be hurting for a fishing business, nobody else. But yeah, I just, there's a lot to think about and a lot of things could happen. Probably could give you something, but I appreciate the time and thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the grid goes, three face power already runs out at Ten Cadi. It's not going to, they're going to have enough power there. Also, I've heard a lot of stuff about a lot of bad things happening here tonight. Let's think about the positive things, not the bad things that's happening here tonight. Let's think about the positive things that we could help out the community with. That's it.
Can I speak one more time about something that's technical?
About what?
About is technical about that area. Nobody's even mentioned, there's a natural gas line right down the side of the road where there are. And there was another RV park that was going to be put in the county. One side was already in Todd County and the other side, the lady that wanted to put the RV park was told unequivocally, no.
36, the 36 RV park.
The McDaniel lady was told unequivocally, no, she cannot expand it after she bought the property across the river.
Okay.
But that, that gas line is one thing that concerns me.
Okay. All right. So we have no one else to speak. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Mr. Curry, could we get your report?
Absolutely. I don't want to repeat. This is a summary of the staff report. Obviously, there's a whole lot more information in the staff report. I'll just hit the high points. I think a lot of this has been called, covered maybe multiple times, so I may even skip over some of this. Again, we've got a total of 61 to 62 acres on Lawrence Road. All right. And hopefully y'all have your site plan. The site plan that's going to be up on the screen is going to be very small, so it'll be difficult for the audience to see it, but we'll do the best we can. These are the amenities, the characteristics of the proposal. I've only highlighted a few of them because they might be kind of unique. You heard discussed before, the horse pasture with stables and corrals and the horse trailer camping sites. There's also an area for RV and boat storage area with an office, and that is permitted within that ordinance that we've heard referenced earlier. At the last meeting, we were told that there'll be concrete pads, the internal roads will be paved, and there will be an internal walking trail in addition to what we see here. The zoning in the area is AR and this particular parcel is part of the GC1, the gateway corridor, so it will be subject, any parcel that touches these major corridors will be required to meet those. And so there are some additional requirements that may not be too onerous because of, for instance, the buffering plan that's already required, but those will be looked at if the project is approved. You see that primarily the uses in the area are just heavily wooded, there are some very scattered single-family residences. There is the church immediately adjacent. There's a lot of pine plantation in the area, which of course is in the future going to be harvested. To the west is the manufacturing operation we discussed before, where they have effluent treatment disposal and there is some wooded area on their side. As we always discuss, there are general review standards required in the zoning ordinance. These are those. Comprehensive plan, this is rural community in the comprehensive plan. There's the description of what that means in the comp plan. You earlier heard the description of what AR means, although as you also heard noted, there's a list of about 18 different special exceptions that are also allowed within the AR. These are the pertinent goals and strategies that you can evaluate against this particular The staff analysis. Recreation facilities as a generic term are permitted. It doesn't specifically list RVs, RV parks, or things similar to that, but obviously recreation facilities is a very broad category, and so this obviously fits within that description. The immediate neighbors are the church that you had discussed earlier, single-family residence and immediately across the street, the Ten Cadi campus. And then if you go past Ten Cadi, there is the Gerald Longhorn Scouting Base Camp. And yes, on the north side of 74, we've got the Long Farm Court neighborhood. This particular criteria talks about nuisances and hazards. I wish to submit to you that every use is potentially a nuisance, every use is potentially a hazard. We all know that what happens at Ten Cadi, there could be disaster at Ten Cadi. We have a Boy Scout camp. Lots of things can happen when kids are running around at camp that could have, be a nuisance or hazard. On the other hand, anything that is well managed and well maintained is, can be an asset to that particular community. So unfortunately, to some degree, we don't have crystal balls, so we don't know exactly what's going to happen. Hopefully, through code enforcement and public management, through that effort, if anything goes wrong, we can be notified and code enforcement can be out there to remedy any problems that are a violation of the county's rules. But anything is a potential nuisance or a potential hazard to the community, some more than others. The primary impact I think we should discuss would certainly be traffic, potentially noise, although most of this area does have 100-foot buffer that would remain based on the plan. So some of those effects would be mitigated. There are specific requirements that we know go outside of what's already been discussed is the signage that would be required, anything that's part of the gateway corridor ordinance and any other building permits that would be required for quite a few of the amenities that are on here. Sorry about the size of this type. What we discuss here is the gateway corridor ordinance and the requirements that are in that. The gateway corridor overlay ordinance talks about setbacks. In this case, those are exceeded and only really address the fringes along 74. They've got that 100-foot buffer and more than just the 74 fringe, so it exceeds anything that would be required by code, including the green space, landscape and the entrance ways. Now, there may be a difference in what type would be there, but that's something we could look at with any plan.
The right way on Highway 74 was 40 feet from the snow line.
Again, the RV campground standards, you've heard that reference. We won't go through the entire ordinance, but there are certain things that we do need to see. I think the biggest thing that I come after looking, come out with, looking at that, is this is a concept plan. This is not a final plan, it's not a construction plan. It gives you the basic idea of what's going to be where, but as you heard alluded to, I agree, a lot more detail needs to come forward. Now, you have to decide as the planning commissioner, what level you're comfortable with to forward this to the board of commissioners, recognizing that a development site plan is required. There is a final plan, it's going to have to have a whole lot more detail than what you've got in the concept plan. So you'll see that it is titled the concept plan, and I certainly came to appreciate that after I was reviewing it, that it is the concept. So basically, if you recommend approval, that's because you agree with the concept, with details to be determined. And the final details have to be approved through this ordinance by the board of commissioners. You see that the site development plan will have to be very much more specific. All of the uses that we've discussed are permitted. There's nothing unique or different, they don't have to ask for variance for any of the type of uses. Visitor parking, that's something we need more detail on. The recreation and open space is very specific in the ordinance, and I'm not sure that we have that addressed in the concept plan that we're looking at, but that's something that would have to be addressed in more detailed plans in the future. Also, the toilet and laundry facilities are not specifically in the plan. We need something more detailed. And I think one oversight that was very clear is there are tent sites, but there are no facilities near the tent site, so we probably need to see a revocation or an addition of additional facilities for that part of the property. And we need to see a lighting plan, that's all part of it. Also of concern, you'll see in the one corner there, the intersection of Lawrence Road and 74 is a future development site. Well, that's very undescriptive and not very clear to what that means. So we'll certainly need more detail. We may even require your conditions of approval if we go that far, that may be a potential We may even require your conditions of approval if we go that far, that maybe a potential rezoning would be required. We really don't have any information about that, that corner portion of the project. Therefore, staff recommends conceptual approval of a conceptual plan. I agree that there's a whole lot of detail and a lot of issues that would have to be addressed successfully before the site development plan is approved, but that step is, the board of commissioners has final say on a site development plan that is very clearly called for in the RV ordinance. The other conditions are that within three months, we have that conceptual approval, that again, there isn't any foot dragging, that we rapidly go through this, and if there's gonna be that Phase One, which is addressed with the twenty sites, that that happened fairly quick. Obviously, any plans to that development, or changes to that development plan would have to come back to the board of commissioners, and if you all recommend it, it could come back to the planning commission for review before it goes that far. You heard in the earlier meeting discussion what that phase would be, so I addressed what that Phase One would be here based on the commitment, or at least the statement from the applicant. We could make that a condition of approval, that within, you know, that Phase One, we have that much development. In terms of, whoops, in terms of the registry management, there is a mechanism defined in the zoning ordinance about there being a registry to monitor how long people were there. Now, obviously, that's reliant on the diligence of the property owner and any of the hired staff to make sure that that log is completely filled out, but certainly, if we don't have a satisfactory log, that could easily be a violation right there, is if we can't understand it or it seems to be incomplete. But again, definition GGGG, you'll see reference to a registry, and we certainly want to have that registry a condition of approval if this goes forward. Again, there's reference there to the future development site. Apologize for the numbering there. Again, we'll ask you when you vote tonight, if you vote tonight, to cite the reasons for your vote and for your motion, and therefore, staff has provided here some for my conceptual recommendation of approval. The fact that, number one, RV parks are allowed in Upson County. We have a provision in there that if they're going to exist, we have an ordinance, and this is how they have to exist. When you look at the strategy and policy to the comprehensive plan, this isn't contrary to anything in there. And we just talked about the special exception review guidelines. Now, if you want to assume that this is gonna be a nuisance, if you want to assume it's gonna be a hazard, then I guess it's a violation of those standards. But again, I think there's a lot of those standards that have to be presumptive if you're gonna call on a negative, that something is obviously or automatically gonna be a negative. In this case, we don't have any proof. When you look at the neighborhood in this particular case, Tenkati and Lawhorne Scouting Base Camp, I think obviously this is a synergy-type issue with them, because I think there could certainly be a relationship between the scout base and the campground. In terms of Tenkati's placement, there are a lot of uses that would never want to be next to Tenkati and would not want to develop there. What those uses are specifically, or who they are, would you want to build your house next to that particular type of use? Maybe you would, maybe it doesn't matter, but there are a lot of people that that would not be a use that they would want to be literally across the street from. So I think that's a consideration of what's in the neighborhood. Obviously, the residential component, the people that live there, the church, also need to be considerations. Again, this is a conceptual plan, must be approved by special exception, but in the history of Upson County, at least the time I've been here, this is one of the most well-defined projects in an early stage that you've gotten. So I think you certainly can't say you don't have an understanding of what the project is. We need a lot more detail, but I think we have a very good concept of what it is. Obviously, you have the obligation tonight to recommend approval, approval with conditions or denial to the board of commissioners. Going through the photographs and the other graphics, here you can see the site specifically right here, right across the street. All of this is the Tenkati. You see some of the water treatment ponds. And then the disposal site's pretty easy, because you can see the circles where the spray fields are. So you've got them over here, over here, and down here. And then when you go past there, here's the Lawhorn Scouting Camp. So these are the major neighbors. Across the street, here's, well, across the street, you have the residential subdivision, Long Farm Court, and here's the church who's represented here tonight, immediately to the east. Now, this focuses in, I wanted to show the intersection, because obviously, I think traffic is a legitimate concern and how it's gonna be managed. This Y intersection is kind of unique here. Now, the entrances, we'll see in the site plan if you got in front of you, are a little further back from this, but I certainly consider this unique and something that needs to be considered in terms of how it's configured. This is the site right here. That would be the future development. We don't really know what's gonna go there. There's a house there currently. And we've got, back to this photo here. You also see this little cutout on the primary parcel. Whoops. That is an manufactured home, and that's considered part of this. And part of the ordinance requires that an RV park be on one single lot. So if this is gonna be considered part of the park, if it's approved, that lot would have to be absorbed into the larger parcel. Alright, again, I apologize for the size of this for the audience, but this gives you the basic layout, at least it's currently proposed in the concept plan. These are the sites for the camping itself. These over here are for the horse trailers. This is the pasture that was referenced earlier. This is the area that would be permitted for RV and storage, boat storage, things like that. Again, that is allowed for in the permitted uses of the ordinance. And then you've got the use of an onsite manager's home, you got a store, and then an office here would be the entrances. So in terms, at least preliminarily, I believe this entrance here is right across from Long Farm Court. This one is a little further down here on seventy-four. And then you've got this entrance, which is just south here of the intersection, and then there's another one down here, which would be, so I believe it's proposed four access points from the park. This is that intersection, looking west on seventy-four. There is a single-family home to the left over here, and that Long Farm Court would be to the right, to the north. Again, this is the house that is due west, and this is that western fork of that Y that comes off of seventy-four. And this is looking from Lawrence Road towards seventy-four. This is looking east on seventy-four. The church would be past these trees. I'm sorry, wait a minute. Yes, okay. This is further down on seventy-four, still to the east, but this is where my sign is. So we're still going east on seventy-four. This is looking south on Lawrence Road. You can see the condition of this particular part of the road where there's a lot of cracks and gnawing. This right here is that RV that's part of the smaller parcel. And this is the house that's on the corner, that's on that acreage that we just have future development. So we would certainly want a defined plan, or at least an alternative, very strict condition about what could be done on that, if it remains to be not detailed. And this is that manufactured home, so I'm a smaller parcel. This is obviously the main entrance. You'll remember from the aerial, there was a large building on their campus, and you can see that. This is just the entranceway, and then this is to the west of that entrance. And that concludes the staff report. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions?
Some questions.
Yeah.
The, I mean, you say you have all full hookup sites, or?
No, not all of them will be full hookup sites, but I do plan on having.
What kind of mix?
Say forty.
Percentage, forty percent?
Forty-four.
Oh, forty, forty?
I would say so, yeah, forty-four, yeah.
The manager residence, is that gonna be a live-in residence, is it just gonna?
Not the plan. Hopefully, we'll hire some of those people locally.
But are they gonna live in their camper that they bring with them? Is it gonna be, you gonna have a house, a physical location? Are they gonna, the manager's gonna live in or stay in, or you just gonna hire a manager that's gonna be onsite X number of hours a day?
That's correct. We'll hire a manager. Now, there may be some situations where it, there are some people that have been there multiple times over the past two years, but you were talking two years on, that, you know, that they may wanna trade for a weekend or two, or something like that. But normally, I'm gonna have a manager there anyway, so I'm not gonna be able to kick their time off unless, you know, they're asking for that.
The boat and RV storage, is that covered mostly or open, or combination of both?
Combination of both, yep. Combination of both, but most don't be covered.
Okay.
If anything that won't be covered, it'll be towards the center of the RV and sort of the front will be the covered.
Do you have any kind of idea of a proposed, like, rate?
So, it'll probably average around fifty dollars a night for a thirty-amp camper, seventy-five for a fifty-amp camper.
Yeah, have you got proposed investment for what you're looking at, the total profit here?
I do not have it with me.
Do you have it? Do you know what, what, do you, I mean, have any idea what you're looking at possibly investing?
Yes, it's gonna cost a little over a million.
Okay, is that from outside investment, or personal?
No, that is personal.
All personal?
Yeah.
Is that missecured, or you?
No, it has not been secured.
Okay, that's, well, most questions I've got.
But I haven't decided I was gonna pick one out for you yet or not either, so.
Well, yeah, I got that.
Okay.
The twenty space, how did you arrive to that and why?
Well, the twenty space, if you can pull up the drawing if you don't mind. And the twenty space is because it's pretty much one strip of what we have on the concept plan. See the top strip, that's twenty space is there, or, like I said, this is still the concept, so when we come back, I would like a little bigger pond in the middle there also, so it'll probably come back around this way to the left-hand side, if it's capable of having a pond there. But, yeah, so the twenty strip is, the twenty is because it's one strip of twenty. If you count those, that's like nineteen spots right there at the top.
I think last time we talked about you're gonna pay, what are you gonna pay?
All the roads will be paved.
All the roads will be paved?
All the roads will be paved.
We're talking about roads, we're talking about bike trails and?
Bike trails will probably just be M10s.
You're talking about blacktop, not paved?
No, sir, for the bike trails, it's just gonna be sand gravel.
But the street, the streets, the roads will be asphalt.
Yeah, they'll be asphalt. That's correct. And the pads will be concrete.
Anything else, Joe?
No.
Joel? Couple things. So your future camping supply store. So that'll be a commercial business?
So, the camping supply store, that's actually something that Steve just put on there. He said it's allowed through Upson County's code. He said it's just something that you can put in there to, you know, sell maybe some firewood or anything for camping, small propane bottles, flashlights, stuff like that.
So it's just for anybody that's in this park?
Just, that's correct.
How about the RV and boat storage? Is that just for people that's in this park?
As far as the RV and boat storage, it's just in the park. I don't think anybody would stay in the park and store their RV there.
Well, I mean, from a boat standpoint, is that going to be like a separate business? You're looking for people, let me ask it this way. You're looking for people who have an RV that aren't staying in your park, or have a boat that aren't staying in your park, that is going to rent space from you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that would be a separate business from the RV park?
Okay.
The other question I've got is, you've got an office up here, but you've got four entrances.
So, there will not be four entrances. There'll only end up being two and three if we consider the RV storage and boat storage. So that'll probably have a separate entrance, RV and boat storage probably have a separate entrance. It'll be entrance from the park also to there also. And like I said, everything will be gated, the whole place will be fenced. But there'll only be the two entrances and exits that'll be at the top, coming out of the, and they will be gated.
Off of Lawrence?
Lawrence and seventy-four.
Straight across from Long Farm?
Yes. Yeah, we don't want anyone coming in with, not coming in, because pretty much it's just the one entrance. Once you get past the two entrances from the two roads, they have to come to that one point, which you have to come to the office. So we'll have a camera right there on that point.
Oh, I get, I get that. I'm just saying, you've got a road coming in to your boat storage area that can also go into your RV park.
Absolutely. So if it ends up that way, that will be gated and locked also. There will not be any way to come in and out of it.
And for this entire park, this drawing has two dump stations?
Two dump stations, that's correct.
And that's enough to handle seventy plus?
If it requires anymore, I'm prepared to put in another dump station. Now, everything's gonna be permitted, obviously, so these are gonna, going to the permitting office and.
Anything else?
I think I've got any. You don't have anything.
Okay. In that case, do I have a motion, conditions? What's your?
If that gets approved, could you raise your conditions? Did you have any of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Again, I apologize if the numbers got messed up, but anyway, the first one, within three months of conceptual approval, a professional quality comprehensive site development plan, and again, this is, this site development plan is required by the ordinance. And again, I think that, I didn't know going into reviewing this that it was just a concept plan, but once I looked at it, yeah, it's just a concept plan, and that's what they called it. So we need something far more detailed and engineered, and that would be the site development plan. Now, whether they consider three months to be reasonable or not, that's certainly a discussion you could have with them. But you heard from the audience and maybe yourselves, if they mean this development, we want it to be done in as speedy a manner as possible. And even if these deadlines have to be moved, that would be something that could be talked about in the future with the board of commissioners if they felt it was necessary, but let's put something at least upfront. And so this development plan, which has to have engineering-type detail, has to come back to the board of commissioners. By ordinance, it doesn't come back to y'all. So basically, this is your shot for the conceptual plan, the development plan goes to the Board of Commissioners by the ordinance. Obviously, you heard reference, and I would agree, there's a lot of details that would have to go into that, but it's also an engineering, those are engineering-level things that I think you can understand as a developer, you only want to invest so much, not, not knowing whether you're even gonna get approved. And I certainly understand that there's a level of detail that we just wouldn't get because of the amount of cost that would go into it, but that cost will have to be met if it's approved by the Board of Commissioners in concept with this development plan to come back. And obviously, if you phase it and they approve it in phases, then they're smaller bites. So that's something that the Board of Commissioners would have to agree to if they decide to approve it. And, you know, I referenced in the second paragraph some of the things that I would expect more detail. The second one here, this is a condition for our more complicated projects that if there's a major change in the plan, well, then it's gotta come back. You don't get to just change it after there's been an approval. Now, this allows me, as the zoning administrator, to decide what's a major change and needs to go back to the Board of Commissioners and what's a minor one, and if there was something questionable, I would certainly go back to the Board of Commissioners and the county administrator, ask them what they felt about any particular change, but anything that would be a major change would still have to come back to the Board of Commissioners. Again, there's nothing specifically in the ordinance about maintaining the visitor camper registry, but there is a definition in there in the ordinance, the definition section of the zoning ordinance, and we would want that registry to be a condition so that, and again, I think we heard it referenced, but there will be no living by ordinance, there may not be any living. Now, in Upson County, we define if it's your RV, you get a hundred and eighty days consecutive maximum. And if it's a rented RV that the park sponsors, thirty days is the maximum. And again, that's in the ordinance, so nobody's gonna be there longer than a hundred and eighty days, but that's by ordinance. If the owner decides to be, you know, more strict than that, that's up to the owner, but we do have basically a floor that they can't go past, or a ceiling, I guess, in this particular case. And again, I do have concern about that three-acre possible future development area that we don't have any detail on, so that would certainly be one of the conditions. So, you've got five recommended conditions from me, um, the requirement for that site development plan is really more than one condition, I mean, there's a whole lot of detail the Board of Commissioners will have to receive if they approve this as development is going forward at the concept level. And again, I would agree, all you have right now is the concept, you don't have the engineered specifics, and we've already heard that there might be some changes going forward from what we've got here.
And these conditions will follow the park no matter if it changes hands or not, correct?
Yes.
This is special exception, so, follow the owner or the park?
If you go back and look at the special exceptions that are for the owner only, they're selective, not every one of the special exceptions stays with the owner at the time, the owner developer. Obviously, the physical plant that would be required here, you know, on a whim, you're not gonna say, well, you can't sell it, or we might just not accept anybody else with all that physical plant sitting there. So in this particular case, it's certainly within your purview that if you want them to go back through approval if there's a change in ownership, we do that with other things, but certainly not with anything that's got the amount of physical plant this has. I did not make that recommendation, but that's certainly something the planning commissioner could do.
Thank you, Derek.
Like being said, do I have a motion? One way or the other? If you are making a motion, please refer to conditions, if it's an approval or if it's to deny, please give a reason for that, for that motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve it, but I've got some conditions that I'm gonna add to it. Upson County Code Enforcer shall be authorized to investigate evidence of full-time residents. Doug, I've got a copy of this if you want.
Okay, thank you.
No loud music. If your camping neighbors can hear it, it's too loud. No open fires. Fires provided only in open pits only. No fireworks. Park closed at ten o'clock. No more. Any other vehicle, if it is a boat, side-by-side, four-wheeler, animals, trailers, et cetera, cannot be stored on property no more than thirty days. These vehicles shall be registered at check-in with RV. No more than eleven RV spaces to begin with. One parking spot per reservation. Any non-camping visitors should also have to check in and must leave park by 10:00 P.M. One more. That these conditions go with the prior to whoever buys it or if they ever change his hand? I don't have that written down, so you can have that.
So the conditions follow the property?
Yes.
Do you have, can you mark on your, um, sheet, on your plan, the eleven, what's included with what you're referencing?
It's not there.
Okay. So, tell me if I'm right, I'm just paraphrasing for you. The ones he's referencing are, there are eleven spots, eleven sites directly behind the manager's residence. There's a playground, a pavilion, and a shower in that, and that would include the dog park and the dump station that's directly behind the camping supply. That would be phase one, right?
Right.
You suggested a minimum of eleven?
That's correct.
Okay, fine.
So that has a one-way drive between those and vegetation on the backside of each one, if I'm looking at this correctly? That also takes into consideration where the office is, coming by the office. What about additional phases? Do they have to come back?
Yes, I think it's.
I'm just making sure we have that.
Yeah, it's, um, item number three.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, the staff report, item number three.
Okay.
Only thing I'd like to add to that is maybe the comeback before the zoning board for any of the proposed future development.
That's, yeah, that's the item number three, yeah.
And, uh, I would prefer the, um, the approval goes only for the current owner and has to come back before the, the board, if it's resold, in case we have changed after the county looks at our RV ordinances, maybe we may, might decide that something's working or not working, and we may need to change it. And if it is resold, then it has to come back before the zoning board to be approved.
So instead of traveling with the property, do you want it to follow the owner?
So in other words, it's got to come back before the, before it's resold again, if it's resold. Okay, I make sure I, that's what I'm gonna tell you. Yeah, I agree with that.
So, that, that's opposite of what was said before? Doug was saying that it traveled with the property?
The property, but I did not want it to travel with the property, no.
You don't want it to travel, you want it to travel with the owner.
That way, it's got to come back if it's resold.
Okay, I'm just making sure we're all, everybody's on the same page.
Well, he can word it, either or, can you?
Well, it's gotta be one or the other.
Okay, so let's go to the district.
District, which is, which is gonna be with the owner.
That's correct.
So if you go to resell it, it's got to come back before the board in case there's been changes in the county ordinance on party parks.
That's what I'm saying.
All right, so, is this, if we pass forth, which is last family, is that enforceable or true or enforce that?
Which, which one?
The, the ones, no fire, no, you know, I made a list of that, how, how's that gonna be enforced?
Well, number one, there'll be conditions of approval, if there're gonna be park rules, we would expect, you know, that may be conditioned, is the park rules have to come back to the staff just to make sure they're consistent with conditions, there's all, I mean, you know, we could have a condition about park rules, and that those have to be posted and they would have to be consistent, maybe we don't review them, but they, whatever the park rules are posted, they have to be consistent with these approvals, you know, that's something we could do, but, um, yes, all of this enforceable, you know, we just will have the very specific words. If there's a second to this motion, then I, I may ask some more questions, but right now, we don't even have a second for the motion, so.
Okay, so, we have Jeff's motion to approve, I'm just making sure we're all on the same page, Jeff's motion to approve with the conditions that he set forth, plus the recommendations in Doug's list, one through six.
And the ones we're adding is the eleven-site minimum?
Yep. Or eleven-site, eleven sites, it's not minimum.
Minimum for the first phase.
Yeah, that's the first phase, it's eleven sites.
And then we're adding, what else?
It travels with the owner, not the property?
Second zone, we had to come back before the zoning board with the future.
Any kind of change?
Any kind of future, the undescribed future, um.
Any, any change, right. Outside of these eleven, you've gotta come back to the zoning board before you do anything else, okay?
There's a minimum of eleven on the first face, correct?
Minimum eleven, but you suggested twenty.
That's correct.
But it's, but it's, no, it's these, it's these eleven that I just, that we called out on here, behind the manager's residence, there's eleven spaces, those eleven, not a minimum of eleven, those eleven.
I'd like to go through the list, Madam Chair. We've got a reference in code enforcement, did you want to be more specific than what, I mean, this is sort of an automatic, I mean, if there's issues, code enforcement will be called, but, or the police or the sheriff's department, one of the two. So is there, you know, something specific that code enforcement would be looking at, or is just, this just a priority for them to go there? We referenced loud music, we can either mirror what we've got for the special event venues, or we could just reference the county's noise ordinance, such as it is. We already have reference to the fire can only be in the designated pits, no fireworks, I presume that means that all.
Yep.
As opposed to our special event venues where we just say that can't be professional, but in this case, we're saying none at all. Closing hours at ten P.M., um, I guess I do need clarification on the thirty-day storage, does that mean that that's in the designated RV and boat storage area, that we're gonna recommend a condition for a maximum of thirty-day storage there, or did I misinterpret that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so in that location, thirty-day maximum.
You know about in the additional storage area?
But that's a separate business.
Yes, a separate business for thirty days, and people will be storing those there as a.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the.
You're talking about in the RV park, in the RV park, just thirty days.
Okay, so we're not talking about the RV?
No, we're not talking about that, no.
Well, again, well, your, your ordinance allows a hundred and eighty days of camping, or you say this is unattended, campers can't stay there longer than thirty? I'm, I'm not clear what the thirty-day storage means.
I think that would be a, a way to put it, is you can't leave a camper there for more than thirty days, it's unattended.
Vacant, vacant, okay.
Yeah, now, these, they've agreed to a fourteen-day minimum, which now, like, see if they want, their maximum, fourteen-day maximum, uh, which would kind of eliminate that, but it, but the county ordinance doesn't go with that, so. We want, you want it put in there that they can't leave one unattended for more than thirty days.
All right, well, that's more clear then. Mandatory visitor check-in, and, um, let's see, that changed. All right, again, when I listen to the tape, I might get more detail, but those are the ones in addition to the ones we already have here.
Yes.
Now, of course, it could be part of your motion that, if, again, the motion as initiated is approved, you want me to come back to you with those conditions, wordsmith, or if you just want to trust me to wordsmith them appropriately and go for the Board of Commissioners, that could be either way, I mean, I could certainly see where this is enough conditions that you might want to have some comfort that I have interpreted what you said correctly.
Definitely. But in my confusion, back to the eleven site, would you, you're only approving eleven sites, or he's required to do eleven minimum?
No, only approving eleven sites.
Only eleven, that's it, for the first.
For the first phase.
Then we'll go from there.
Because he proposed twenty for the first phase, but you don't want twenty for the first one?
No.
But are we limiting with eleven to support it financially?
I, I'm not concerned about the financial part of it, my part is the planning and zoning part of it. My part is to see what kind of steward that we're gonna have, and then we'll go from there. That's just my, that's just my part.
Okay, is everybody clear on the conditions?
I'm good.
All right, we have a motion to approve with the conditions we just discussed, do I have a second to that?
Sorry?
All in favor?
Is that unanimous for?
Three-one.
Three-one. Very good. All right, um, for clarification now, are we bringing all this back to you with this vote, or are you just gonna trust me to work? All right, so before we forward it to the Board of Commissioners, we're gonna meet next meeting, and I will wordsmith all your conditions.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I think that, that's a pretty extensive list, we'd like to see that, and make sure that what we're intending to be is correct.
All right, then we have two choices, and you know in the past, we can either continue the public hearing, which will take you indefinite, or by ordinance, and the reason why we do that occasionally is you have to render a final decision within forty-five days of the closing of the public hearing. So now, obviously, your next meeting is within that forty-five days, so if you're comfortable with that, we don't need to reopen the public hearing, and that'll be within the forty-five days, or you could reopen the public hearing, whatever you'd like to do, either one works. do, either one works.
I don't see need to open it.
I think we need to open it again.
Okay, all right.
Bring it back to us within the 45 days and let's...
For the next meeting, have it for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
All right. So that will come back to us for the next meeting with those conditions, for us to look at that and make sure that's what his intentions were, and everybody sees that in writing. And then there'll be a vote on that, and then that, based on that vote, it will go to the county commissioners. So it'll be two meetings away for the county commissioners meeting.
Understood.
So we just had a vote that was approved for the 11 meetings, and now we're backing it to another vote?
No, we just want it, because of all the conditions, we want to see those conditions in writing, because we've kind of piecemeal those together to make sure that that is their by some intent.
So the thing we're voting on is the actual conditions?
You have conceptual approval, you've got that. They just want to make sure that I, obviously, we couldn't wordsmith this meeting, every single one of those conditions, so I will do the best with the words, and then we'll bring those back just to make sure that...
Do I need to be here, I mean?
You're not required to be in any meeting by ordinance, it's always a good idea.
All right. Okay, um, if those of you that want to, want to leave before we finish, we've got a couple of other items. Go ahead if you can, give them a few minutes to leave.
I'd publish a lot of county commissioner meeting, state leader.
Yes.
But that'll be two months.
And Doug asked if I can have a copy of what the lady, the very first lady that gave, I think it's that one, yeah.
This one, and that's what her...
This one?
Yeah. And that's what?
Yeah, probably, and then I can just get him back to me, he's in, sure, I can, okay.
But I gave her this one.
Thank you.
And then, did they get the, I used to give those pictures?
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, um, sorry we held you guys for so long. Get to see, get to see the finer workings of the planning commission.
All right, to introduce, because I was impressed by the decision-making this planning commission has made relative to the one-year-old gateway corridor ordinance, I thought it was appropriate that we hear from the two people who are in charge of enforcing that ordinance. I would say only in the last few months have we started to gain traction. We have a few signs that had to meet that monument sign design. We've had a little bit of the landscaping, discussed with some projects. Obviously, this is the first really big project that would have to meet some of those requirements, but, you know, they already exceed in terms of width. So again, because our officers have actually started to gain traction with enforcing that, I thought it was appropriate that they talk to you about what they've been doing up to now. Martisha Thompson is standing over there to all right, and Officer White, Tyler White, is here handling the computer. So without further ado, Martisha.
About Upton Gateway Corridor, in 2023, Upton County official adopted the Gateway Corridor overlap district ordinance to implement regulations and standards for properties along highways. The Upton County Gateway Corridor Initiative aims to enhance local highway visual by adding landscapes, maintaining signs, walls, fences, and installing consistent advertisement signage. This helps to improve travel experiences, increase community pride, and create a welcoming atmosphere for travelers through community involvement. Our organization is code enforcement officers maintain visual harmony by aiding businesses in upholding standards through communication, education, and enforcement of ordinance, enhancing the community visual appeal through signage, street signs, monument signs for residents and commercial businesses. Care premise, code enforcement urges businesses and residents to upkeep clean properties through lawn care, trash removal, and property disposal, the building, the zoning and landscape. Our mission prioritizes environmental preservation and standard practices for a minimum impact balancing economic growth with environmental care. Code enforcement officers will work closely with commercial and residential properties to ensure compliance and establish guidelines connecting with like-minded people with the sole purpose of creating a coordinated and visual stunning entrance for our community. The 2024 goals and targets have been established as a cornerstone for advancing the aesthetic of our guidelines, fostering a cohesive entrance into our vibrant city of Thomaston. This is with the monument signs and the zoning and landscaping. As an agency with the government organization, we are proud to develop relations with both gateway businesses and residents. We have worked 25-plus cases since January 1st, and our goal is to do more than 200 properties throughout the year. Here we have our track of our monthly gateway overall calls, the notice of violations situations, and cases that have reached compliance.
And if you've got any questions for the officers, please, you know, the work that they've already been doing on the corridor, certainly welcome any questions or any clarification you need.
What, what's your biggest challenge out there? I mean, what's, what do you guys see as your biggest hurdle that you have to climb over?
Care premise with the resident, trash, junk vehicles, just overgrowth of trees, bushes.
What's your reception when you go to, go to those residences? Do they understand what your role is and why you're there?
Yes, ma'am. We give them a full breakdown of what, majority, we are complaint-based, unless we can see it from the road, we'll go out and address the issues. And once we give them our overall what our expectations are for Upton County, they understand why we are the way we are and why we enforce the way we do.
That's good to hear. What's the number one complaint that you guys get from, from residents?
Mainly the care premise.
Just care, yes.
I might add, I think the approach for this year is going to be public engagement, is educating our community, and the growth that we're wanting to have is going to not only incentivize travelers from outside of our community, but to also provide some form of social gathering or pride in our gateway corridors, not only our businesses, but local businesses, and our residents to enjoy shopping on our corridor. Last thing you want to do is drive down a shopping outlet or shopping store, go out to eat, and bear witness to a property adjacent with seven junk vehicles, or trash and tall grass, or dilapidated signage, or faded painting, or unkempt fencing. I think that our biggest hurdle is going to be introducing code enforcement to the community where it's been lacking, especially in this more proactive sense this year, where we're actually going to be door-knocking with or without a complaint, and self-initiating these calls to elevate our living standards and our commercial standards. And I think the community is definitely ready for it. The reception received from, whether it's constituents, colleagues, or just residents that we serve, they want more of it. There's also the pinks that are kept in mind, is nobody wants the infamous Peachtree City, but they do want, they would like to see a little more heritage involved in the community's direction. And I think that's where we can definitely gear our minds together with you at the planning board, with our infamous zoning administrator, and us being the hammer that's out there enforcing the vision that you guys have created. We're the ones that are going to be encouraging through words, hopefully not through further legal action, but through words and encouragement to stay on the same path to systematically unify our corridor into one appeal, one appealing visual, and that's that we're a mountainous valley area, you know, and we should embrace that. And then by that, I think you will see growth going down 19 on both south and north side as we continue through the years. I think you guys have created an, established and created a phenomenal comprehensive plan, and I think we're able to use those tools that are provided by everybody here through the ordinances to help increase that on a frontline side. But I think that's, that's the, that's the overall view from my point. I've only been here for nine months, now my, the context of my history is eight to nine years in Spalding County, where in the last four to five years, there's been significant growth, not in, not only in our host city, but in the city that we host, Griffin, but also in our county as well. And I bear witness to it along with other different various roles, and I think the community here is definitely going to be, I guess maybe, maybe the word extends, it comes to mind, once the full picture is revealed. But I think getting there's going to be a lot of trials.
Yeah, and I think, not speaking for anybody else, but just for myself, I think that's, there's work to be done on what's already here, but also setting us up for doing the right thing and guiding us the right way going forward. So what's coming in new already has that set standard, and we're holding them to that. We're not, we're not letting somebody slide by that, that just makes it that much harder to, to enforce. So that, that's my biggest thing, is trying to figure out how we're going to deal with what we have. We pretty much have a handle on going forward and what we can require them, you just sat and heard this last presentation, what we can require them to do. Obviously, we have to hold them to that once they are in place, but looking at our quarters, we have a lot of work to do.
Coming from my professional standpoint, and then being in the field here in this community, we face a lot of, I wouldn't say dilapidated, unkempt parking lots, parking areas that are creating hazards or slowing traffic down as they enter and exit the corridors, which is a traffic safety move for me, or a concern for me. But I think when you get into a lot of the chain commercials, there is a lack of attention given to their guardrails, their sidewalks. If it's not within the 25-to-50-foot encroachment to the actual structure itself, they push it to the side and don't take care of it. For example, I first came on board and had to deal with all of our Dollar General commercial, or all of our Dollar General sites. We didn't want to maintain the retention ponds, didn't see why that was part of their problem, much less the actual right-of-way where the grass had been growing over, and outside of the 25-foot buffer, and one specific would be the Barnesville Highway Dollar General, they didn't see why they needed to cut outside the 25-foot radius of the building itself. And I included that the entire parcel is their responsibility, not just one portion. And I think that goes back subsequently, saying that introducing this community, both commercial and residential, to code enforcement is going to be a wooden wall that's going to require being broken down, and it's going to be, it's going to be broken down not easily, but with probably much more, much more to enforce than anything at this point.
Well, and I think if they know, if the citizens know that there's somebody behind it that's going to enforce it and is going to, if you don't fix it today, I'll be back tomorrow. If you don't fix it tomorrow, I'll be back the next day, not six months later.
Exactly.
They're more inclined to, to, to correct whatever it is.
Exactly.
And, and I think that, you know, that's something we've got to, we've long needed, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I think, I think...
We've allowed a lot of stuff that we shouldn't have allowed for a long, very long time. And I think that's...
A very, very long time.
Yeah.
A lot of the, a lot of the words we receive as rebuttal is, I've been doing this this way for this many years, ain't nobody said something, somebody's saying something now. And my response is, I got here nine months ago, and I'm following the letter of the law, and the ordinance says this. So whatever it was that you thought you were doing before, it's because it was getting through defenses.
In the last couple of months, we've had to tell people, this gateway ordinance, yes, it's been in place for 12 months now, and it's the law.
Yep.
We've been saying that a lot lately.
Well, and I think another thing too is, and we encourage, I mean, you saw this room tonight, it's full, but there's a lot of our meetings where there's three people here. But we had multiple public hearings for our gateway ordinance. I can honestly say there wasn't very many people here to, to really voice too much about it. So that's, you know, encouraging, you guys encouraging people to stay aware of what's going on. You're, you're on a gateway into our city. Understand what involves you, what affects you, and be a part of it. I mean, we welcome feedback.
On the screen is a brochure that we've come up with that we're planning on releasing this year as we're interacting with commercial. This is predominantly for commercial businesses, not residential. But this is a brochure that we'd be passing out along with as we've, I think we've come across enough questions now to kind of grasp where we need to guide our commercial business partners in our community. I think for the most part, we've gotten pretty good feedback from them as far as being compliant voluntarily. Of course, there's been the disgruntlement about, well, now I'm going to spend XYZ to do this, or, you know, now I've got to take my time out of business to do that. We understand that, and that's why we always want to be compassionate towards the business aspect, but with a timely manner also being done professionally. You know, if your boss gives you a deadline, you try to meet that, God forbid you couldn't, you ask for a little bit of an extension, we offer the same courtesy. We say, hey, look, meet us at the 14 deadline, let me see what kind of progress you've come up with, and if you need additional time, we'll work with you on that. But it has to be valid, it has to be justifiable why you need more time to work on it. It cannot be just, I just put it off of the back burner. It needs to be taken seriously. This is the other section of it. It's a little bit more wordy. I'm a very lengthy talker, so I definitely, I definitely try working on keeping things a little more simpler, but there's a lot of information... But there's a lot of information to go out as we've been dealing with individuals on our corridor that are just lacking the overall basics for what this gateway overlay district ordinance is. I want to ensure that this brochure is able to answer those questions in one fatal swoop. And if we're going to mass print them and send them out and put that time into it, we want to make sure this brochure is able to encapsulate everything we're wanting to give that person's owner. So there's no questions about later down the road, well, you didn't tell me, well, we're covering it.
Right.
So.
I like it.
Well, I just want to thank the board. You know, there was a variance from your gateway corridor ordinance asked for, and an ordinance you only adopted a year ago. And I was, I'll say the word, inspired by the fact that you stuck by the ordinance that wasn't that old, and then, you know, we mean it. And to be honest, that's what, you know, we've been doing this work ourselves. I think it's time that our partners on the Planning Commission understand that what you did a year ago is happening, and that we are trying to enforce it as best we can. I'm not saying we aren't hitting some bumps, I can name some names. But, you know, it's the beginning, you know. We didn't really do much in the beginning because not much was happening. But as we see new sign permits come up, or, you know, landscaping requirements come up. Now, let's all remember, this is a corridor light. This is not, with all due respect to anybody who disagrees, this is not an onerous requirement, this gateway corridor. You are very light on a lot of things. So you can complain as much as you want, the people, that they have to deal with and say, yes, you have to do it this way, yes, you do it. Believe me, I can find ordinances very quickly that are corridor ordinances that require a whole lot more than what Upton County does. So this is an excellent beginning, especially for where Upton County's coming from. But let's certainly not be under the belief that, you know, we're going to or trying to be a Peachtree City, which we've started to hear that again recently. And it's just not that strict a requirement. But we are trying to enforce the minimums to have some improvement. And if in the future, as a community, we decide, oh, we need a little bit more in our gateway corridors, we want them to even be more attractive than we require. Believe me, there's a lot of room for elevating our standards even higher, but we've got to start.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say. I mean, we started from a blank slate, and we intentionally did a light version of that because we wanted to see and get feedback from you guys. And let's hear what the chatter is out there on this to understand down the road, what do we need to add, or what do we need to change, or what do we need to, something new that we didn't even think about? All of that is something that you guys, as you see stuff, that it doesn't quite fit in a box, so to speak, but it's a problem, please let us know that so that we can compile those things and maybe once a year, once every two years, whatever that timeline is, revisit that and see, do we need to make some tweaks here, there? Because like I said, we started out with a blank piece of paper, and a lot of versions of that thing. I don't know how many stacks of that I had, but it was a lot. But it was intended to be the light version. We did not want to create mass hysteria, but we had to start somewhere is better than nowhere.
We do that with roosters.
Yeah, we did that with roosters. Yeah, yeah, we started animal ordinance with roosters. And somehow or another, we got to monkeys and giraffes and anything else that breathes and makes a sound outside of a human being.
So your work area is fine, the city limit.
Sir.
City limit.
No, county.
I'm only, we stop at the county threshold, which is why it's really important for us to communicate with the city code enforcement and the city building official, and their zoning administrator to kind of align. And I think, I think for my time, I think both zoning administrators did a phenomenal job of doing such. Now, for the grunt work, as I would say, is myself and the city code enforcement officers have to kind of align the vision that's been given to us, and then push it out. It was a lot of territory.
36, 1974.
And 36.
And 36.
And 80.
Yeah.
It's a lot of territory.
Yeah.
It's a lot of territory. It's a lot.
Well, we appreciate what you guys are doing. It's good to see. I know some stuff that's been done that has overall made something look a whole lot better than it did before it was done. And it, if nothing else, it teaches a lesson to somebody down the street or down the road. They notice it, if you don't think they notice it, they do. And they start asking, well, why did they, why did you have to do that? And somebody says, well, we got a visit from code enforcement. Really? Well, maybe it makes them go home and clean something up. They don't want you to come see them. But, no, I think I can say this for all of us. We certainly appreciate you embracing that ordinance and really looking at it from the intent that it was put together from, and trying to enforce that force. Anything else?
Yeah, I'll just take you back to what you said. You know, if y'all see anything out there that will help y'all, feel free to come in and talk to us about it. We see if we can amend something in. Because there was, there was a work in progress. It took a few tries. I think it sat around for a while at one time. But, yeah, it's not perfect, I know, but it's a good starting point. We're very blessed for whatever will help you all out. We want to do that, we are bold with that. Because no matter what ordinance we do, we don't have teeth in it. We're no good.
Yep.
And that's where y'all can be, and thank y'all.
Absolutely. Sorry we kept you all night.
Ah, no, it's okay.
I was not expecting a room full when I walked in, but.
Neither way, me and Doug.
I thought it was another meeting going on. I peeked my head in the door like.
Doug looked back at me and was like, what?
All right, let's finish up here.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all. Y'all come back anytime.
Yes, absolutely. Item C is a zoning ordinance text amendment that is talking about flex space.
And since we did advertise this as a public hearing, which probably was a mistake on my part, if we could, and I know that nobody signed up, if we could go ahead and hold the public hearing, and we can certainly continue it to your next meeting.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public here.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All right, public hearing is open. So now I need a motion to close the public. Oh, we're going to leave it open?
Let's just keep it open until your next meeting.
Okay.
I'll just go ahead with my staff summary.
Yeah.
You have some materials there. This is sort of tied into the Franklin Drive project that is going before the Board of Commissioners tomorrow night for the rezoning, and y'all approved. The description of flex space, which was an integral part of that project, is not really defined. And I think that we have already been told that at least one of the tenants that's intended for that building right up front doesn't really fit in C2. It's more of an M1, light industrial type use. So the owner of the project, myself and the county manager, sat down and discussed what we might be able to do because this flex space is, it's not brand new, but it is relatively new in terms of at least a term and a concept that's used a lot. I could actually go back to another community I worked in more than 20 years ago, and we had a similar thing, where they'd just taken an old plant and started to allow light industrial type uses to use that very large space. And there were some very interesting, basically mom and pop businesses that were able to use what you would probably call industrial or warehouse space for retail type uses and manufacturing their relatively small products. So that's, I think, the vision that we've got here. But I think when we start putting it in the C2, we've got to be very careful. If it was an M1 use or an M2, maybe less so. So what you got in the packet that I only dropped off on your dais tonight was the preliminary language, maybe for C2, we would limit the maximum size that these uses could be. But I would ask that you spend some time with the lists that I came with, those list of approved uses for C2, M1, and M2, to make sure that we don't allow anything in C2 that we wouldn't want to allow. And again, I think the first step was limiting the space to no bigger than 5,000 square feet. I think we would eliminate a lot of industrial uses with that limited space. Maybe that's too big. I believe the one use that was specifically talked about in the previous project was 4,000 square feet. So we could cut it down if you wanted to. But this is a type of space that we probably need better described because we have one. We have one now, and it's intended, and hopefully it'll be a very successful multi-business location for years to come. But the zoning ordinance doesn't quite do what it needs to do there to give us guidelines. So I would ask you to look at that starter line that might go into C2. I will certainly be spending more time to beef it up and to probably be far more open in what would be allowing the M1 and M2 for that type of use. But maybe especially what do we not want to see in something that is a light industrial use, but would be acceptable maybe in a C2 type situation.
I think one of the things that I heard Matt say when he was giving his presentation was that one of the people that were going to rent one of the spaces from him was actually storing stuff in his.
Mini warehouse.
Mini warehouse. And it was a landscaper who was storing his chemicals for spraying yards and stuff like that. He had to buy in larger quantities, but he needed somewhere to store that. So it may not be manufacturing or assembly, but it might just be a storage type situation for a business, business-related storage.
Well, and I think he also just, he puts his equipment in there so it's a little more active than just taking chemicals out. And I think his equipment stays there.
Yeah, I think you said he left some equipment, his trailer there if he didn't need it for certain jobs and stuff like that.
Well, and the other issue was a manufacturer of maybe two or three parts for motorcycle manufacturers.
Right, right.
So they would be, you know, a supplier or at least a supplier for that motorcycle business, but they would be manufacturing something. And obviously, that's not a use you would expect to be sitting next to Chick-fil-A or to Walmart. So we'll have to be very careful about that and what we let in and what we don't. And if you'd spend some time thinking about what that would be for your community, and I'll do the same thing, and we'll put our heads together about what would be acceptable in flex space, and what would not, and what is flex space, and what isn't flex space.
Okay. All right, well, we will leave the public hearing open until next meeting. We'll revisit this. Item five is other business, there is none. Item six, planning commissioner issues and announcements. Does anybody have anything? Nope. Item seven, secretary's issues and announcements.
Very briefly, you've got two of your hearings from your last meeting going to tomorrow, and that's the project, the rezoning we just talked about on Franklin Drive, and then the open and shut Rayleigh rezoning. Both of those will be going to tomorrow night's meeting. The news on the Tavani variance is that he is appealing your decision. Now, in a conversation I had with the county attorney, I explained to him that actually there's some changes. This is not exactly the project that you reviewed, that he's made some, basically adding in some additional landscaping. No change in where the canopy is going to be, so there's still that violation of the standard. But he has added in where there was no landscaping, the 10-foot that we had talked about would be a compromise. So I also, just to get in the weeds a little bit, discussed with the attorney that, to me, it's not quite fair to call it an appeal when he's changed the project.
Correct.
And so I think what we're going to have to do is after this is come up with a change to the ordinance where if they're appealing a decision, it's got to be the exact decision that you made. So it's not really fair to call it an appeal when they've altered what you said no to for variance. But in this particular case, being the first one, he said, let's let it go through as an appeal, and that will be the first meeting in April of the Board of Commissioners. So while we'll call it an appeal, I just want you to know that it's not technically exactly what you reviewed. And in the future, we'll craft an ordinance that says, no, you make any changes, you can't appeal it with changes. You've got to appeal exactly what you proposed. If not, it needs to come back to the Planning Commission because it's a new project now, or at least a modified project from what you reviewed. So for the first time in my experience, the Planning Commission's decision is being appealed. And again, that'll go to the first meeting of April for the Board of Commissioners. And then finally, the Vincent Institute classes, you see that they're giving their round, their announcement basically for the year of the classes that are available. The most interesting thing to me, for those of you who've been on the commission for a little longer, is there's a new one, 104. And it gets into maybe a little more detail about zoning and planning, and it might be something of interest to those of you who long ago took the 101 and 102 courses. But certainly, especially for our new commissioner, if he wants to go to the 101, that's available. There's at least two sessions, I think, scheduled that you see on there. One's within, I think, by April, and the other one's not till August. So there's at least two sessions this week that Commissioner Fallon could go to. But if any of you are interested in the 104, because as you may know, just to see what they were teaching, I went to the early 101 and 102 classes just because I wanted to know what Chrissy Marlowe was teaching. And I would probably do the same thing here. If any of you are interested in going to the 104 class, I'll probably go with you because I just want to see what it is that you're being taught and how advanced it is compared to the other classes. So I know that most of you have done the 101 and 102, and I'm not even sure what happened to 103. I didn't see that class listed, whatever 103 is. But 104 was, looked interesting to me, and it is new, they say, and the material is new. So you certainly don't have to make any decisions now, but we're prepared, as you know, your training through the Vincent Institute is paid for by the county, and we'll certainly make the arrangements. Glaube they'll help us out with that, getting your arrangements taken care of and paying the registration. If you drive your personal vehicle, we reimburse you mileage. And I don't remember, do they feed you? It's been so long, I don't remember whether they feed you or not. But if they don't, you're certainly entitled to at least lunch while you're driving up and driving back, so.
So the Thursday, the 18th, April 18th, is the only time they're doing the 104 class?
At least at this time. Now, I guess because it's first time, they don't know whether it's even going to be popular. I don't know how well attended. Since so many of you are senior now, we haven't been sending many people to these, you know, actually for years because y'all have had the training. So I am unaware of any other date other than that one for a while.
Yeah, I won't be gone that date, but I'd love to know if you see something later.
I'll talk to her and make sure we find out if Chrissy's going to schedule a second one later in the year. Oh, and, you know, there's, I go to the zoning administrators twice a year. There is a Georgia Association of Zoning Administrators. I've never heard from any commissioners in the time I've been here that y'all are interested. That is a two-day commitment to go to the zoning administrators. And obviously, it's the people who are in deep zoning like I am, it's day-to-day, and we get very deep into the weeds. If y'all are interested ever in going to the zoning administrators conference, you're certainly welcome. We would pay for that. Just be prepared to get pretty deep into zoning more than you do here. And you wouldn't be the only planning commission. There's one of the counties around Lake Okony. I don't think it's Green County, help me out, maybe it's one of the others. But they regularly, their planning commissioners from that particular county are regulars. I've sat with them at a couple of lunches or breakfasts and talked with them, and I've noticed that they keep coming back now. They also tend to get reappointed for a very long time in that particular county. So you wouldn't be the first commissioners and probably the only planners. So you wouldn't be the first commissioners and probably the only planning commissioners if you decided to go to zoning administrators. We've already had our first conference of the year, and then it'd be in the fall for the second one. But like I said, because there were planning commissioners there, I just make the offer that if in the future you want to go for a couple of days and really get deep into zoning, we can introduce you to that. We won't even talk about the planners' conference, that's very general and more ivory tower than you probably would want to be involved in. That concludes my issues and announcements. Madam Chair.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Or adjourn?
I'll go to our YouTube office.